Icy Panch.
Okay.
Call it at some of the fox. Right, pledge allegiance. Pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where which stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
So, item number three, public comment.
That's a good question. Nancy Gores, can you give me? Where are we this, the design phase of the PFAS filtration system?
It's that.
Okay, just wanted to, because I know it was, it was pending.
Yeah.
And I think it's important for the residents to, to get it updated, so.
The, the short answer is we have a meeting Friday.
Okay.
Hi, Jim.
Um. Just one little thing, I don't know if you've seen it yet, Eric, but Helping Hands has put together a very comprehensive year in review for two thousand and twenty-three. Um, as far as the number of clients served, estimated, uh, how much food we have given out, volunteer hours, our partners, all kinds of stuff. It's a pretty lengthy report that, um, I don't, have you seen it yet?
I don't think I have.
Okay, but if you've seen it, would you make sure that everybody gets it? Because, um, we just feel since we represent the town that it's important that you have all that information. So if anybody asks what we're serving, how, or whatever, and, um, it's pretty extensive. And if you have any questions, please just let me know.
We already read this report.
Um, it's coming, we just finished, it just was finished maybe two weeks ago, so it's, it's gonna get to you.
Yeah.
It's in transition, you know, maybe being tweaked a little bit, but it's, um, again, I think it's important that it stays here if anybody asks any questions. But just as a quick review, we served about forty-seven, um, different clients for Thanksgiving and about forty-five for Christmas, which totaled just in those two giveaways, about five thousand pounds of food that we gave out. We did about thirty-eight, thirty-nine thousand for the total year, over thirteen hundred clients. That's just what, but, but all the other information, because we have a number of partners that we work with and stuff, that's all in there. And again, if you ever want to come down and see what it's like in there, I would love to show you. We're pretty proud of it, so.
Great. Every day I've driven by, it's been raining, so.
Yeah, so, or just to know, text me and I can meet you over there, or, just not a Thursday, just not a Thursday.
Yeah, I think that's also the other thing, is that I've been driving by.
Parking is limited, yeah.
VIP parking. Yeah, uh, we don't have that in town. Um. Richard, do you have anything, or are you just sitting there?
No.
Okay.
Nothing.
Wayne?
Maybe at the end.
Okay.
I'll, I'll give you the benefit of the doubt, listen to the rest of the meeting.
All right, um, for a little minutes, you'll have copy of the minutes in your packet, um. I have no corrections, okay?
Yeah, I know, no corrections to it.
All right, I think I have a motion to approve the minutes as presented.
So moved.
Second, all right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, motion passes unanimously. Refunds, abatements, and transfers. Um, we will start with refund. Um, this is for Scott Struzinski of sixty-nine Blueberry Hill Reserve in the amount of eighty-seven dollars and seventy-eight cents. Um, yeah, it's all the way after the minute, um. And.
That's just an overpayment?
Yeah, just an overpayment. So.
Move that we approve that over, uh, refund to Scott Struzinski of sixty-nine Blueberry Hill Reserve for a amount of eighty-seven dollars and seventy-eight cents.
Okay, go second. And any discussion? No. Okay, uh, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, motion passes unanimously, it can now follow its normal course. Um, I believe you were sent today the abatement list for the, uh, Ambulance Association and Volunteer Car Company. Um, it's pretty self-explanatory, uh, this is part of the, uh, agreement with the companies that if you volunteer, you receive an abatement on your taxes for, uh, I believe it's a stipend, um.
That's what I couldn't understand, that the, I just.
The stipend, this is, this is Gina, um, can I, the, the, um, stipend would go to anybody who doesn't have any property in town. So, so that those folks with, who pay property taxes, if they have, if they're entitled to the full two thousand, it'll come off their, um, tax bill. But those who don't have vehicles or land or house, um, would get it in a form of a stipend.
And, and what is the abatement? Because I read in here, excuse me, like two-thirds the maximum allowed, but not less than, so what it, what does that mean?
I, I have to get, I have to get some clarification, because the, um, it used to be just this flat thousand, or now it's two thousand, but I don't, if you look at the fire company's list, there's a handful of people where it says max, or not max, or something like that.
Yeah.
And so I, I have, I, I think the assessor knows how it works, I just, I'm not, I don't remember. It's new, so.
This is new from the first, this is the first time we're doing it this way?
I think it might be the second year, but, um, the assessor will, uh, use the, um, the policy, and, you know, obviously she can figure out who has taxable property and who doesn't, and, uh, uh, these lists just came in today, so I didn't get a chance to, um, refresh my memory.
Yeah, I think I would just feel comfortable, a little bit more comfortable with acting on abatement, just understanding exactly what.
Well, the next one happened.
How much is being abated?
I mean, the maximum it would be, would be two thousand dollars per name on the list. But I believe it'll be less than that on the, in the case of a handful of people, uh, that were on the, um, fire company's list, because it doesn't have, they're not at the max, whatever that is.
So the max would be two thousand?
I believe so, yeah.
Yeah, if I may, so we added stipends the year before left for those. So the, the whole goal, there was an incentivized program that we were working for to, to ensure that we incentivize young people to come into the fire department and continue to volunteer, but at the same time, make sure that we retain older volunteers who are continuing to serve. Um, the stipends were brought in to support those people who didn't have real property in town. Um, it would pay for their car cap, but they'd get a cash cash payment to make up for the difference. Now, the qualifications for the stipend and the abatements are managed by the fire department and by the ambulance association in conjunction with the assessment. So what you're seeing is that list, and I believe according to our ordinance, this has to be approved in January. Is that correct, Gina?
I believe it's, it has to go to, it goes to the, the board of selectmen.
Correct.
When you don't mean by, that's what you mean by approval?
Yes. Approval by.
I mean, it used to be, I mean, I think Kathy, you know, might have brought it to our attention a few years back, that this is the way it's supposed to be, have gone. So we're trying to get back to the letter of the law, I think.
Mm-hmm.
Um, but as I said, I didn't get them till today, so.
Yeah.
Just under the.
No, thank you for that today, because I, you know, like, right when you got them, you sent them over, so I started to try to just read them a bit.
There, there's nothing, there's really nothing new there. There's nothing really new there. Um, it, it will, it will, uh, impact, minimally impact the taxes, uh, the, uh, I want to say the grand list. You'll see it in adjustment on the first page of the budget, where we talk about how the grand list is re- reduced by the value of the, again, I'm doing it without it in front of me, yeah. It's, it's, it's a, it's a, it's a, um, minimal impact, but it's something we, we note there. And as Nancy said, it's an important incentive to both the, the, especially to the young ones who might not have enough taxable property here. So they have the stipend. That, I'm only looking for clarity of this, you know, this definition of max and anything that falls below max. Uh, and, and I think, as, as Nancy said, it's worked out between the two, uh, agencies and the assessor. And then she'll come, she'll come back with a list with all of the values on it. So then the tax collector knows what to do, and then I know what to do. I have to, uh, track down the handful of people that get the actual stipend and get them put on payroll for one pay run, and so it's W-two's and, um, I'm sorry, it's, uh, W-four's. And social security numbers. So that, that, this will be our, I think, our third year of doing it. The only mystery is this less than max that we have.
Sure, or, or, yeah, I have the incentive, the philosophy, the vision, I have absolute full agreement with that. I'm just trying to figure out exactly what it, so I, I read an article ten here that was, you know, they define what a member is, in good standing, a regular member, a life member, so, so they have those definitions, and they calculate whether it's max or not max. And then the annual abatement amount is written as two-thirds of the maximum allowed, but no less than a hundred.
That does, does.
Or, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, no less than a thousand. I just don't know what the maximum, what is the maximum allowed?
That must be the two thousand.
Is it two thousand?
Yeah, I think so. Nancy, would you agree?
Yes, and that's a two.
Yeah, is it two thousand?
Maximum to two thousand.
So it's two-thirds, so they get two-thirds of.
But that requires, and each, uh, so each department, whether it's the ambulance association or the fire department, they set their standards. So in the example of the fire department, they have to make so many calls, they have to have so many hours of training. And it's the same exact thing for the ambulance association, but on different levels.
Yeah. That's really how they determine whether they qualify for the maximum.
That's, that's clear, I just wanted to know them. Doesn't seem to be, the two thousand, I can't find really anywhere.
Is it, this is per ordinance from Town of Killingworth?
Yeah, is that.
So maybe they just, it, it's called having the ordinance, and it's just not printed out in.
But our former selectwoman is confirming that it's two thousand?
Yeah. Just been through this at least once.
Um, I'm looking, this is Gina again, I'm looking at the first page of the budget, and under, uh, we, we list on the first page of the budget the net taxable grand list, and it's reduced by an estimate of the first responder's abatement. So, for example, when we did the budget for the year we're standing in, we said, well, no, next, next year we're standing in, we said that the grand list might be eight hundred and thirty-five million, five hundred and twenty, eight hundred and thirty-five million. And we reduce that by two point nine million for the first responder's abatement. And then, so you have a slightly lower, um, that taxable grand list. I don't know if that helped or not.
A little bit.
I also could produce the list from last year to see what, what the value was for the less than. For max.
Okay.
I do, it's.
The complicating factor is, you know, when you're comparing the grand list to, you know, the amount, the taxable amount.
Yeah.
It, you have to factor in the middle rate, and so now we're into multiplication, so.
Just multiplication anymore.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So.
But with your, with your, with your input, um, you know, that was helpful, I'm, I'm comfortable moving.
Yeah.
You know, on this.
Yeah.
Um, so I'm happy to make, see if I can make this correct motion, to accept the Killingworth Volunteer Fire Company and Killingworth Ambulance Association, uh, members who are listed to receive the appropriate abatement set by the Town of Killingworth.
And I make a friendly motion to make it simpler.
Of course.
The abatements as presented.
Thank you, Eric.
Prove the abatements as presented, simply so that. Okay.
Any more?
Sure.
I'll second that.
Okay. Any further discussion? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor of accepting the abatements as presented?
Aye.
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 Okay. Motion passes unanimously. Um, transfers, we don't have any for us today. Um, on to the budget.
Um, Gina, again, uh, I will say that I, I finally got to cleaning up or truing up the, uh, status of the ARPA projects, and I sent that out, I think, Sunday night. No, no surprises, it's kind of a unique exhibit that I developed to try to show the list of all the projects, um, the amount that was approved by the town, and where we stand in terms of whether we spent it or not. There's also some proposed closeouts for projects that came in under, and, uh, we, it's kind of a moving target as we, um, uh, and, as we move through the, through time, um, there's a, the Board of Selectmen agreed to use any of the unassigned funds towards any shortfalls for the, the field projects at, uh, Eric Hour. And, um, that's gone through, I believe, the Board of Selectmen and the Board of Finance, it just has to go to town meeting. So I think that's how we'll use it up. And I think, I think if it really starts to look like we're going to have a little bit left over that even the park doesn't need, or that we can't spend by the end of two thousand and twenty-six, we may, um, I might suggest to the Board of Selectmen and Board of Finance that we have sort of a blanket statement that we take to the town that says the remaining, you know, handful of money we will apply against, um, roads for the year, or a capital project, just so we can tidy it all up at the end. But, but use very broad language. Clean it up. Does that make sense?
It does. Thank you. And.
Oh, and as far as, as far as this, next year's budget, um, I'm starting, I've got a, I'm, I'm starting, the, the, their requests are pouring in. I'm missing a few big players, but, uh, as soon as I have, um, where I think it, it, we'll start talking about it in February. I will talk to, um, the first selectman probably a little bit before that, but we'll be ready to, to start looking at numbers in early February.
And, and Gina, if, if I was understanding your Excel sheet correctly, we're standing around twenty-seven thousand dollars left to be allocated from the ARPA funds, correct?
Ex, yes, except for we.
In general. What would the?
We've said we'll use it, at, at this point, there's a, the town hasn't approved it, but we've said that we would use that towards the, there's any shortfalls for the, uh, ball field.
Okay, understood. Thank you.
That's kind of the only wrinkle with the outstanding ARPA funds is the fact that previous board made motion that anything left over from any projects, which at the time, I think, was around three hundred and fifty thousand. No, two hundred and fifty thousand, because, uh, it was split between pickleball and the, uh.
There's a, there's a breakdown right in the center of that, that exhibit that I sent, or maybe a two-thirds of down the page. Um, it talks about things in progress.
It probably was in our November minutes.
It's either November or October.
Yeah, I think I even, I think I even dated it. So, yeah, it was the last that approved it.
Yeah, so that just has to be brought to town meeting, which I think we're waiting on, well, depending on if we get in old business, um, one other component besides department software, so. Um. Have any questions about the budget? You know, Gina's here all the time, um, working, talking about it almost every day, much to everyone's reduced sanity at some time, at points, but it is what it is about budget, and see where we go from here. We'll start scheduling meetings pretty swiftly to talk about it, so.
Okay.
Other questions for Gina? Any general comments on the budget?
Okay, thank you, Gina.
Cool, thank you, Gina. Um, two thousand and twenty-four appointments, um, so you have a list of appointments here before you, um. This is with regards to, for the positions, um, our reappointments, um, they failed to qualify. What that means is basically just they didn't go talk to Dawn for, and gets sworn in in the thirty days that they have. Um, the other two, Anthony and Louis, Louis General, um, and Margaret Tubman are, uh, new appointments. Um, Anthony to emergency management, um, and Margaret to the Committee on Aging, um. There's no real questions, comments, well, that gets, it's questions or comments from you. Um, everybody here is looking to serve, um, just didn't.
Didn't on the thirty days.
Two names that are not on this list are the Greenaways, they're not in the country, which is why they failed to qualify, so, um, and, uh, Keith Nairn, who chose not to continue on as.
Okay.
Uh, library.
So that was my only question. I think you answered all these folks that failed to qualify, with, for sure, they.
Yes.
They indeed want to qualify, or have a chance to qualify.
Yeah.
Um, the, the, the one comment I, I do have, um, for the Sustainable CT, um, I appreciate Tom, you know, he kind of, he's one of these guys that does, he's a super volunteer.
How, how spread thin? I, I guess that is a question, um.
Um, but, you know, I, you know, I, I always appreciate his enthusiasm, you know, I, I know he's probably happy to do it. Um, the, the problem is more in general with the, the Sustainable CT, um, group in general. It's that, um, there's all Democrats, I think, on there.
That is a good question.
And, you know, I, I'm just, you know, minority representation applies to, you know, it's also kind of like, all right, you know, like, it's kind of challenging to find, you know, even Republicans that like want to go on there, so here we are. Um, but I just wanted to bring that to the attention of the board, you know, that, um, I, I think at this point, they can't even really meet because of that minority representation rule. Um, but even as well too, I, you know, i- i- it's one of these things that, you know, I, like, I, I appreciate, you know, the goal and the objective, you know, of forming a commission or, or committee like that, um, you know, but in a town like this, it can be challenging to find people to kind of fill it, so I, I guess what I'm, what I'm saying is two things. One, you know, we got to think about how Sustainable CT is going to look like if we can't find an R or U to go in there, you know, and that, what does that mean going forward? Um, but also one of these things that maybe the way that we approach a Sustainable CT, maybe not necessarily in the purview of a committee, you know, but it could be some, um, I forget the, the woman's name who's done really a lot of good work, you know.
Radon B. Radon.
Yes, you know, if like, you know, she could be some, so I just wanted to bring that to the attention of, you know, I have no problem, you know.
Yeah, no.
Putting Tom on here, you know, it's just kind of like, that's where we are with Sustainable CT.
Agreed, and it is one of those, you know, I don't want to say uncomfortable question, tiptoeing around, like, can a committee function if it doesn't have?
Right, right, right.
Um, I don't disagree with anything you said, um, we just have to beat the bushes harder to find people willing to.
Yeah.
Exactly. Serve on that committee.
Yeah.
How big is the committee right now? Three?
No, it's
five or six. I think, but I think there's a vacancy, one or two vacancies.
Even with Tom's appointment.
There would be a vacancy, yes.
And no, we've reached out to both, and all, all committees that we know of, and.
I'll definitely go back to the bush, you know, I'm kind of happy to appoint, you know.
Lost Walt, so Walt is the.
Yes, Walt was the R, so.
Okay, okay.
Um, with Walt's retirement, we lost him.
Got it.
So.
Got it.
But.
Yeah, so, again, I.
Try is, try money, you know, we're happy to appoint, you know, if there's a vacancy.
Awesome.
Right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, yeah, I'm happy to move, you know.
There's been a little bit of flux in all regions in that aspect, so.
We'll see, well, I mean, fortunately, you know, it's like, of course, the work they do is important, but, you know, it's not one a mission critical thing.
It's not like, you know, we're missing, uh, quorum for planning and zoning, or Board of Finance, but, yes, still important, but
yeah.
I don't want to quote Animal Farm here, um, and actually never read it, um, now that I think about it. Um, so, with that discussion, I can motion to approve the appointments as presented for the terms as presented.
Don't move, second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Great. Motion passes unanimously. Uh, department reports. Um. The only report really is, my perspective is Walt retired. Um, we're going to be filling the form in position as swiftly as possible, we've already garnered some interest. Um, we'll be posting more generally tomorrow, um, just a little shorthanded today, it seems everybody is sick this weekend, so see how, and that there's more, so.
Is, um, just curiosity, is there any sort of internal interest, um, for the position?
There has been discussion, um, I think I have to be somewhat careful talking about this, because it is.
I was just kind of curious.
Yes.
What the interest level would be.
There has been discussion, let's leave it at that, um, and we'll see.
Is there a, kind of a process in the timeline?
So, the timeline is, soon as tomorrow, I hope to have the job posted, or, uh, generally, we'll leave it out for, uh, two weeks or so, uh, and then we'll conduct interviews swiftly and have this filled swiftly after that, so. And in a weird way, we're kind of taking this as a dry run for a position of tax collector, clerk slash office floater that Debbie has built, and, um.
Office floater.
It's mostly that, one, it's a union position, and two, it's, so that's the way the title has to be, and two, she also serves as answering the phones and doing a bunch of different administrative things that administrative hot jobs, I guess I could call it, um.
Okay.
Other than that, don't have any other department reports.
Good to hear that that's rolling.
Yes, um. Really hope to fill it swiftly, that's people. Um, and for your, for your clarity, Mark is currently filling, uh, part of the role in terms of, you know, calling in contractors when we have snow.
Okay, great. Does that sound good?
Doing the crew leader. Yeah, yes.
Okay, great.
So. Be working through that.
Yes.
For the next couple days. Um, old business, um, I once again bring departmenting software before you, um, hope I answered some of the questions you had regarding payback, um. This is one of those components to get into a town meeting, um, that I would like to take care of, um, it is the preferred software in the department, um, I believe. Richard, your, Eileen made a comment at the last meeting, on the last meeting, that, um, it does save you a ton of work in Clinton because you use similar software, um, and, you know, that is sort of the experience that we've had with other towns in the region. Um, because this is the software that most other towns seem to use.
And that's the one we're using.
So, um, we're not all alone, on our lonesome. I think the only other, of the two other softwares, the only other town that uses one of them is East Gramby.
Okay.
So, and it was the software that was less desirable for cloud permit.
Yes.
Yeah.
I guess my, my only question would be when it comes to vote, what modules you're getting, so what the final cost is.
We are just getting, I have it. Don't have an answer to you that question at the moment. I have it laid out in the scope of work, and it's just, I cannot recall it off the top of the head.
Yeah, there's a lot of components.
There are a lot of components, we're not getting all of them, it is.
Dog licensing is not included.
No, we're not getting dog licensing, we're getting billing permits and.
Yeah, I just want to compare it to what we have to see, because I know what our cost is.
Yeah, it's very bare bones. So the ongoing cost is, as stated previously, twenty thousand, the implementation is, uh, twenty-nine thousand, um, approximately, um, twenty-nine eight-nine-two, because I have it written down.
That actually sounds familiar.
So. Yes.
Make a motion.
I'll, I'll make the motion, I'll make the motion, then we can have some further discussion, um. I would like to award, make a motion to award the bid to Open Gov and send the additional costs of nineteen thousand eight hundred and ninety-two dollars to town meeting. I'll make the motion, then we can have some further discussion, um, I would like to award, make a motion to award the bid to Open Gov and send the additional costs of nineteen thousand eight hundred ninety-two dollars to town meeting to cover the total cost of twenty nine thousand eight hundred ninety-two dollars for system setup.
You said nineteen thousand, so where's the? Gina, do you have something for us, Gina?
I, yes, um, I think that part of the motion should be the, where the, where you plan to take the money from, whether you're gonna have an operating expense or a capital expense.
Thank you Gina.
There's a phrase, there's a to be funded.
I, I believe I did actually, now that I'm looking at that, I did leave out. Yes, so let me amend my motion. And Jamie, just go with me on the uh. I didn't make it in the last, um, so I'll amend, I'll just amend this motion to, for this dollar amount to come from capital. That will be.
The nineteen dot.
The nineteen thousand eight hundred ninety-two dollars, because this is additional capital request, that's why it has to go to town meeting. The twenty thousand dollars is operating cost future for budget, you'll see it appear in the budget.
Mm-hmm.
That operating expense, will they prorate it based on when we initiate the software?
The capital cost is being prorated.
Yep. But I think when we budget for next year, we'll plan on a, an operating, an ongoing operating expense.
Right.
And I'm, if it helps, I'm looking at that Open Gov proposal, Eric, it says software services permitting licensing and code enforcement, one service area. Master address table or assessor system integration, record data export. And then it says permitting, licensing and code enforcement. Master address table or assessor system integration, record data export. Does that answer Richard's question, maybe?
He's nodding his head, so big to.
Okay.
Expand on that a little bit, it's basically getting the permitting software so that Z E O and the planning, our building official and building inspector and uh Robin's position, the administrative assistant, um. All talk to one another and it's all hand, that's all handled digitally, the assessor component is sending the changes that are made to a building to the assessors so that the a, an accurate assessed value can be applied to a house.
Sure.
And that is also another component that the other two lacked, as I stated previously, that um the other two softwares were not compatible with the system that is currently used by the assessor's office.
Just a point where I don't think anybody's second, so I'll go ahead and second this.
Okay, thank you, I was gonna mention it.
We could have a discussion, um, uh, thank you for sending all of that, like doing that legwork, you know, the financial stuff, it was, it was helpful, um. You know, but of course, looking at the numbers and you just provided an interesting caveat, you know, uh, to that, that, you know, I mean, the price is pretty.
It is a pretty.
Different.
Different price.
There's, there's, there's a big difference, so, um. Did you just say, did you say that the Clear Gov and the Cloud Permit, they don't?
Yes, they don't integrate with the assessor's office.
I see.
That would have to be a separate build out.
Um.
I don't know the reason for that, so.
That's why you're paying so much more for the Open Gov, um, but um the Excel you sent was, was pretty helpful to kind of look at, you know, the man hours, because one of the questions that I had, you know, also Richard, was, you know, given the expense of this. Um, particularly since, you know, there's, there's probably gonna be a lot of upward pressure on the budget as a whole. You know, I'm trying to see, you know, like, okay, wow, you know, like.
Yes, I agree.
Fifty thousand dollars, holy moly, um, so, um, but the, but the the information that you provided for us, it looks like so an estimation of, of the cost savings here. Uh, so with the building official, with the zoning enforcement and with the admin assistant.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so is, just one question that I have, it's, so is that less hours they're gonna get overall, so they're gonna get paid less, so are we basically taking the money that they would get with their hours to?
No, I don't think so. No, it's more.
Like, would it just be, would they assign other things within that four hours that they could do?
Yes, that is more accurate, so instead of, you know. I'll use Robin as the example, Robin putting the file, putting the permit into the computer, typing it up, sending it over, doing all this legwork, filing it in the filing cabinet, she could be all, uh, you know. Scanning previously done files and putting them into a digital system.
Cause I definitely wouldn't wanna see, you know, their pay get cut, you know, basically steal from.
Like it's sort of realized financial savings, it seems like it's a an efficiency savings.
Yes, it's an efficiency savings that allows us to do other things, and one other thing that's kind of come up a little bit is more of a forward-thinking discussion on how uh proactive we can be in getting people either to um, understand the uh permitting process and, you know, uh.
Will there be any like?
Enforcement process.
Will there be any like fees associated with like training, you know, okay, so it's all kind of included?
Right.
In this.
Included in that is training setup, um, those training sessions are recorded.
Okay.
And as part of the ongoing twenty thousand dollars, we have full access to what they call their university, which is basically just the training repository, um, so, you know, if you have a question, you can go and take it up and find it, um.
I, I'm, I'm certainly, you know, it's believable that, you know, I, I think there could be these potential cost savings over time, you know, but again, with this like annual.
Yeah, it is a big amount of money.
I wonder if there's any sort of like, could we somehow like measure? You know, or look at like, okay, now with this permitting software, you know, we're actualizing like this.
Getting their money's worth.
Cause I, cause I'm assuming we're gonna be renewing this every year. Cause it's just a one-year subscription, right?
Yes, I believe that is correct, it would have to be, it would be an annual subscription, um, some of them. So I know, for example, the town clerk's office, the subscription for um their software system is either three or five year.
Okay.
Um, I would have to.
I was just thinking of like, could there somehow be, you know, like, let's say we realize, and I, I'm sure, Richard, it's, it's wonderful to use, you know, and, um. But I was just, you know, wondering, could there somehow be like a check on that, like, let's say three years down the road, it's like, huh, like, we're not really.
Yeah.
Getting, you know, um, and then maybe that could guide our decision, you know, whether or not to renew or switch to something else, um, that would just be kind of my, you know, like a check, you know, could we somehow look at this?
And I think training is gonna be important, right, training to make sure people know how to use this or. The local builders we have in town or local contractors that do a lot of you know, uh, foot traffic through this building with permitting and things like that and contract.
And I'm certainly, you know, I think it's reasonable to bring Town Hall to the twenty-first century, you know, like I, you know, I, you know, most major corporations, institutions, research institutions, you know, they use. But of course, when I saw that number, I was like, wow, Adobe, it was in like my statistical packages, so I just kind of wanted to flush out a little more.
Yeah.
You know, and get a sense of what we're kind of running into and embracing this.
Yeah, to be honest, I'm probably underselling some of the capabilities of the software, um, simply in terms of, you know, that sort of statistical analysis that there is some of that baked in.
Yeah.
Um, but it is difficult not being a user to assess how much time you can save as a user.
Sure.
And of course, the big question is, you know, how well do contractors, builders, homeowners?
Yeah.
Integrate using the software in their life, because, you know, it saves them a trip to Town Hall.
Sure.
Um. Richard, any sort of?
I can say it probably saves us fifty percent, it will pay for itself.
Yeah.
We've, it, it pays for itself, now we have a few more modules, we capture a few more things which you don't really need to, you can walk over to the tax department and see if the taxes are paid, ours captured automatically, but that's another expense.
Got it.
Uh, but time-wise, it'll, it'll, it'll cut Robin's time.
Okay.
Spending on permits in half.
Mm-hmm.
It also makes it easier that, like, when I'm in the field, if I see something going on, I don't have to call in to see if there's a permit, I can pull it up and I can look and see if there's a valid permit.
Yeah.
So it, it's got a lot of advantages.
Just integrates into like a mobile device, you know, computer.
You can pull it up on your iPhone.
Okay.
Yeah.
It's.
Most of the contractors are familiar with it. Madison uses it, Clinton uses it, a lot of the other towns use it, it's the same email and password, no matter what town you log into. So you don't have to have multiples. Um, most of them like it, it's got some quirks, we're constantly working on things. We have the ability in the office to manipulate the pages and build them out the way we want.
Okay.
And move things around, or move the workflow around, so once you get comfortable with it, you don't need to keep going to Open Gov.
See.
And they also have live answers, I can send them an email and have an answer tomorrow on a question.
Okay.
But there's a lot of stuff in the, right up in the help box.
Got it.
So it's, it's, it's pretty good, it's, like I say, it's got some quirks, but none of them are perfect.
Thank you, Richard. The software is gonna have quirks.
Yeah.
Okay.
Just a.
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, okay, all right. Okay, so, hearing no further discussion, all those in favor of approving the motion as presented?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, motion passes unanimously. Traffic safety, um. This is one of those uh points that we're gonna keep on the second half of the month, um, obviously, traffic safety is continuing concern, um, people are continuing to speed, get reports of that. I had somebody come in at the Thursday or Friday, she's walking down Roast Meat Hill Road and people are speeding and, um. I think two of the things that this kind of ties into are, you know, looking forward to the budget, um, having either public works or possibility of additional state trooper. Um. The idea of either having somebody who can patrol a little bit, of course, no trooper can be in any, every place at once, um, but it is a possibility of reducing it because, well, now they don't know when they're gonna get caught or not, or if we're going more public route, public works route, having two additional people, let's us play speed spies.
Sure.
Look at where they are, move them around if necessary, and.
Uh, what's the status, was it one of the speed spies damaged?
Well, yeah, that was one on, um.
That was one on eighty, I don't think we have had an update, I'll have to follow up on that, um.
I was just kinda curious.
Last I knew, it was getting.
It looked like it was a.
Yeah.
A purposeful.
Yes.
Attack on our speed buddy.
Yes, um. I'd forgotten, um, I will make a note of that and.
They're speeding, but they're egregious and they're.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. Um, we were, we were looking for parts, I don't know where.
I think that was the last, the discussion, yeah.
But. I'll get to this a little bit more uh later, but um I spoke with Lieutenant Governor on Friday and she pointed out that there are grants available for, you know, traffic studies and one thing is, you know, when we're looking at, you know, say Route eighty, Route eighty-one, which tends to be the main sector of uh concern, aside from Green Hill and Roast Meat intersection with Route eighty. Um, possibility of doing traffic studies and seeing what more directed measures we can take to
Yeah.
cause people to slow down, um.
With the speed buddies, if, if I remember correctly, it, it captures some data, right, we can capture some data from it.
We just haven't been able to pull it out of the cloud.
I see.
Hmm.
See.
So I, I don't know if there, if, if we get newer technology or we pursue this further, but I remember talking to Rich Mohall and we couldn't get the data.
Yeah, I think it's. Cause I, I, I think if we could, it may be helpful, you know, especially since the Traffic Safety Commission has kind of spin around and then it kind of got folded, you know, and it's now back to us that, you know, I wonder if one thing that we can do is if we can somehow get some data that then we can start reporting back to the town.
Yeah.
Cause, you know, I, I would hypothesize that the speed buddy might be
helpful.
Helpful.
Yes.
Um, you know, this is when you're driving and you're like, oh, man, you know, and it's like blinking at you, I think even some of them, like they like, there's like a little strobe light, you know, that like it flickers at you. So you kind of get this, so, you know, I would just be curious, cause you know, if it is helping then I think that could be one thing we kind of show to the town, like, hey, you know, like, we have these speed buddies, you know, here's like one thing that we're, have been doing that's producing results. Um, and then I, you know, I, I think, you know, kind of following up on these, you know, if there's funding available, traffic studies, find other ways, but I wonder if just tangible for us, like what can we do, you know, like as a town together, at least to get some data and show like, hey, cause i- if the speed buddies are functioning and if the data is saying like, wow, we're seeing a overall reduction of speed, you know, on this stretch, you know, we can think about placing another one or, you know, so. Not that we have them all over town, you know, we can kind of cycle them around, um, and then I think, you know, when, you know, people come to your office and they're like, hey Eric, you know, like, they're qualifying like down over there on, you know, Green Hill. You can say, well, we have these speed buddies, you know, here's the data, it's working and at least that's like one.
One thing.
One thing that we can be like, okay, you know, we kind of.
Yep.
Got something going on.
Yeah, and you know, the other options are include like cameras and things like that, and so.
Yeah.
It is.
How totalitarian, do you wanna get?
I, I really, I really don't like that.
Like, I think West Hartford does it now, I think they have.
Yeah, they installed them.
I think it's red cameras, so.
Two years ago, something like that, they were like.
I'm sure it's working.
Great.
No.
It's.
It, it, I agree, it does get a little creepy in that respect, um.
I think they're, they're more like red light cameras, so.
Oh, okay, right, 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 yeah.
Um, but yeah, this is ongoing concern.
Kind of a thought, you know, you know, especially now since the, the committee has kind of folded and it's like it's fallen to us now. That I wonder, you know, if we could, again, if we can somehow get that data. You know, I mean, I'm sure it's not gonna be like a rich data set, you know, I'm sure it's just gonna be, you know, like number of cars, you know, average speed, all the. But if we can show like reduction over time with the speed buddy, you know, then I think it's kind of like plus one for.
If the state can help with grants, because it's the studies of something, so we can get some data just on a study.
It comes out of Yukon, I believe.
Yeah, some of it is, comes out of Yukon, some of it is also out of, um. O S T A, I'm trying to remember the acronym, what the acronym actually stands for, Office of State Traffic Authorities, I think. Um.
Jack Drummond of Madison, he's the chief of police in Madison, he had the information about the traffic safety studies, so if you wanna give him a call, I'm sure he'll provide the details.
Yeah, um. There are sources and, you know, of course, nothing is cheap, nothing is free, um, but any grant money we can grab and shake out of the state, we can.
Sure.
Get some information. Any other discussion on traffic? Don't go speeding down Green Hill, please, um. Committee on Aging, Joan?
Oh, um, yes, I gave search of copies and I also sent you all an email that had this report in there as well as the details, um. And the deep, I don't know if you had a chance to read them, and I did my printer ran out of paper, so, but it's a survey that we developed. They hear a bunch of the comments that are in here, you know, they're in small print, uh, if you want, I could leave a copy up here, you can make copies made for yourselves, if that's okay. Um, since we were charged with the, um, on the Committee on Aging, but one of the first priorities that we had identified that we can't make a determination for the town and for the seniors on our own, we really need to identify, to get an outreach program to identify the needs of seniors. To that end, we developed a survey and it consisted of thirteen questions, and the survey actually was based on our charge, so we like our charge was, um. Identification, communication issues, health, recreation, resources, programs, housing, economics, employment in a senior center. Um, so what we did is we took each of those items and we sent them as a question, yes or no. Uh, is this an issue for you, is health an issue for you, taxes an issue, yes, no, but then we provide an opportunity for comments. And the survey was just, and thank goodness for Rivercock, because they were able to develop a survey for us online that we're able to add, people were able to access. And then we also had paper copies that are available, uh, not only the Town Hall and Library, but also were distributed to the Beechwood Community. Um, and I'd like to thank Eric for your email blast about the survey, cause a lot of people use that email blast to access the survey. Uh, as well as a follow-up survey that you did, so thank you very, very much. Um, now, we received three, three hundred and seventeen online responses and eighty-seven printed for a total of four hundred and four responses. Uh. Now, we recognize the fact that even though we had the online and the paper available, we still aren't able to reach all seniors. We still aren't able to reach all seniors because seniors don't have a computer. They don't have access to information that might be available, and particularly seniors, which we found. From some of the comments that were made in the survey. So, what we did is that from that detail, that's at this report. We identified, uh, we took all of the questions that were there and we. Based upon the responses, we tallied up the responses and then we put them in a prioritized list. So, what you're seeing is not the questions in order that were asked. But instead, it's the priority based on the percentage of question, of the answers that said yes, okay? So, number one priority, not a surprise to anybody, housing and taxes. The main housing issue is affordable housing. And it's not affordable in the sense of the state statute that mandates affordable housing based on income. Italy is a place to have for seniors to relocate. I mean, like, I live in a huge colonial house. At some point in time, maybe I want to downsize, but finding, it's not only finding. Affordable housing is finding a house that you could actually have correct. There is a need in Killingworth, some, some foreign affordable housing, not only for senior citizens, but also for young adults and just adults in general. But that was really big and there were a number of comments that said they're leaving. Because of unavailability of housing, they want to downsize, so they're moving to senior community centers in Madison, Clinton, Guilford. Old Sabre, et cetera. So, just highlighting that. They also said they needed affordable rent. Now, I don't know how many rental committed, uh, properties we have. But affordable rent was also a significant issue. Now, for other, now, the other is, they didn't have as many comments stressing this, so they put them in other. But the other, they said they need condos, smaller houses and zoning regulations for minimum acreage. Like, instead of just, uh, having, you have to have two acres owning for, for property. Maybe, and we do have them, I know in Killingworth, when I was on the planning, a zoning commission, that we do have communities out there. That they have houses and they share communal, uh, community, community open space. That takes care of not having to have two acres for each of the dwellings that are there. Um, and also cluster zoning was brought up, for your information. Taxes. I don't know what more I could say. Other than taxes are too. What was it? Eighty-six percent housing taxes, high taxes are too high. And they also actually, um, a lot of the comments were that people are moving out of town because of taxes. And also that we, maybe there's an opportunity to freeze taxes, reduce taxes for sixty-five and older. Consider tax rebate tax payments, decrease, and this was interesting. Decrease spending built into Killingworth budget and the Board of Education budget. There were several comments that are concerned about the plans that are being made, cause it will have an impact on taxes in this town. And also in the region. These are just comments, I'm not giving any opinions. These are just what people had expressed. Um, this was an interesting suggestion, though. Consider jobs for seniors in exchange for lower taxes. I have no clue what that is all about and there was no.
Go on the ambulance association.
They also want to reintroduce the item in the town budget for seniors. Apparently, it was in there, I think, for eighteen hundred dollars. This is when we had the senior group that used to operate out of the congregational town hall there. Uh, but then after COVID, COVID hit and the committee actually went away. And so, but there was a line item in there for, for projects and stuff to take place. So, um, yes, we will be submitting a budget to the Board of Selectment for your consideration. Um, for health and safety, glad you brought that up for the health, water that we drink. Uh, concern for there, a lot of seniors are trapped in their homes with storms and no accessibility. A lot of them are. Seniors that live alone and, and which is a concern, um. The River Valley Transit has bus transportation, but there's no stop. It's not feasible to handle stop at Beechwood and they're concerned about the safety of crossing the streets and. I'll, I'll go into what we're gonna do about it later and there, there's a lot of senior issues of loneliness, money for medication. Help with dementia and Alzheimer's. It was, uh, it was actually a awakening call for me to read these comments that. These are concerns that a lot of our seniors have. Um, safety, you name it, you already named it already, you're addressing it, speeding. Um, and the emergency police response time, uh, and the fact was brought up that, yeah, make a separate call for the, um. Police, there's a state trooper and a separate call for the ambulance association for, for response time, if you needed an ambulance. This was voiced as a comment.
Isn't very short. Never mind, sorry, I'm talking over them.
Um, and also they, uh. They wanted more police protection. For burglary, stolen vehicles and maybe even a local police department, which I think has been explored in the past. And I know you're working on safety, so. Nothing more to be said there. The other thing is that they. The specifics that were in there, where a lot of seniors don't have the monies or can't afford. Simple services and like landscaping and leaf concerns and, um, and snow shoveling and they, they. I don't have an answer to that, but it was a concern listed and some of the comments further on and some of the other sections, this and maybe we could have. Produced a list of handymen that could be accessible to the town to be able to access, cause a lot of people just didn't know who even to call. So, uh, and the other one, uh, recreation activities, which was sixty, sixty-six percent. There were so many comments on pickleball. And yet, really, if you read through the detail that I'll, I'll leave with you, there were so many comments on pickleball. They want a pickleball league, they want indoor pickleball and not just outdoor pickleball, but I have a note in here. Is that for the Park and Recreation Commission, we do have pickleball courts at Sheldon Field. So, but a lot of it, I think, is due to communication. And people just aren't aware of it. Um, they wanted more indoor and outdoor recreational activities. Um, in Killingworth, in, I mean, Killingworth was right now, they have to drive to other towns to take advantage of them. Like the other senior centers that are in, um, Haddon, in, uh, Westbrook, Madison and also Clinton offers a lot of activities. Other consideration, uh, a walking track, newcomers club, adult education. Opportunities to learn, again, lack of communication, not aware of the Wednesday senior lunches. Um, they don't know how to volunteer, they would like more information, how, really how to volunteer. Um, encourage senior trail walks and there were several comments in there about. Beechwood has a number of activities and I get the beach, I've been receiving the Beechwood newsletters. And they do have great activities and programs, but they're close to Beechwood residents. And so, the survey really emphasized the fact that, yes, we have a community that deals with seniors and they're doing a good job. However, there are a number of seniors, a large number of seniors that do not live in Beechwood. That need to have their needs identified as through this survey, need to be dealt with. Um, the senior center, sixty-one percent. Um, people don't want to drive to other senior centers anymore, they really would prefer to have something. Um, within Killingworth and. Senior center or even a hired part-time coordinator that could handle, since similar to something that Clinton has. Um, and others, there was expand the hours for the municipal agent for the elderly. It was the responsibilities clearly defined and made known to the towns. And then organize programs connecting seniors with children, which I do recall, there was a PayPal pro. Penpal program with seniors and just schoolchildren. So, I thought this was fascinating that some of these suggestions came up. As far as nutrition and food, fifty-seven percent said yes. Socialization and loneliness, forty-six percent. Now. These are the comments that were also hard to read, the fact that so many seniors, especially those that live alone, experience loneliness. And they don't have an opportunity to socialize and be. The library was recognized as a great place to go to socialize and be. And at a beach would have wonderful, uh, outreach programs and coffee hours and, uh, social hours they have. But we need to also address those Killingworth citizens that don't live in Beechwood and something does have to happen there. Um, as far as fuel assistance and rent rebate, forty-three percent. I know Mercedes, um, municipal for the elderly is working on this also, but it still is a concern and I don't know. I think a lot of it is communication. Employment opportunities, now we go down. To the, to the ones that are minor issues, in my opinion. Employment opportunities was fifteen percent. Needing assistance navigating Medicare and Medicaid, fifteen percent. Help with smartphones, computers, communicating with others, fourteen percent. Transportation, doctors and shopping, ten percent. General concerns that were identified that were not necessarily a question that addressed it, but comments where they. They need town resource, there aren't, you can write town resource for seniors not living in Beechwood. I mean, that was a common theme throughout the survey. We need some kind of a newspaper, newsletter. It's a shame that we lost the Killingworth Crier. Cause now, there really is no mechanism in Killingworth. Uh, we have the source in HK now, but that doesn't cover Killingworth. As the Crier did and we have your news flashes that come out from the email blast, which are great. But not everybody has a computer, which is a concern. A lot of that had to deal with knowing, getting information. What vendors could they use? What handymen could they use? What are reasonably priced information for newcomers and. And then there were Beechwood specific concerns, which have nothing to do with the town here, the Board of Selectmen. They're really Beechwood concerns and I will be meeting with Beechwood in a couple of weeks. And go over the concerns that are expressed by the Beechwood residents. Now, as far as what is the Committee on Aging doing with this? Well, we have reviewed it. And as a matter of fact, some of the high priority items, we had already identified as high priority issues or concerns. When we came up with a table of actionable items, um, whichever, I don't know if this board has, I know your board had it. I will forward that over to you at the end of the, when I get home this evening or over the next couple of days. We're meeting with you, you can want to meet with the Board of Selectmen, specifically targeting their, the, the concerns about taxes. Um, the Board of, uh, the District Seventeen Regional Board of, uh, Education. To let them know the concerns that people have about taxes. Um, the Recreation Department, um, they provide facilities, we know they provide facilities. But also there's the Region Seventeen Recreation Committee that we're, I'm gonna meet with to say, look, these are the needs that I identified. Maybe we need more programs for seniors, cause I check their newsletter that they send out all the time and they have great programs, but. Pretty much none for, specifically for seniors. Uh, they were for adults, but not specifically for seniors. Um, Youth and Family Services and River Valley Transit, I'm on the Board of Directors there and I'll be meeting with them tomorrow. To go over some of the concerns regarding transportation. Like, one of the concerns that was brought up at our meeting was having a, um, hidden, like a. Place where people could stand to wait for the bus. Um, but the problem with that is, it depends upon how much land the state owned. And the, if there was a grant available to build it. I know the governor's budget, the last governor's budget did provide for shelters, the traffic shelters. And we are building them in a number of towns, but Killingworth was not on the list. Um, and I'll have to find, I'll have to get the details as to why. Um, and the Beechwood community, I'll be presenting them, specific issues as well as the general results of. And, um, based on the needs of identified. In our list that we identified, we're developing action plans right now, how to address each of these. And quite honestly, the number one thing throughout the survey and the one that we're addressing immediately right now is communications. We need to develop some form of communication outreach that'll hit everybody. I know we're talking about. Um, like Beechwood has a newsletter, we don't have anything for everybody, cause we have the email blast that come out that Eric does provide. Which hits a limited number, those, the people that have access to computers. There is, uh, the newspapers, the source, HK now, there are websites that we could have used, like all things Killingworth. And, um, there is a possibility, maybe we could consider doing a newsletter, but these are all. Issues that we're actively pursuing and identifying and, um. The bottom line is. Seniors in Killingworth feel, I don't know if we're alienated or.
Isolated.
Isolated and they, they don't feel that the town is doing all that much for them, as much as what the town is doing and, uh. And I hope you'll support, you know, the Committee on Aging in, uh, our efforts that we're going forward and. If it's okay, we'd like to come up periodically and give you a status update and maybe ask for your, uh, support. And as far as the tax options go. It was a concern listed a number of comments and it's not, we can't do anything about that. What we did do was we identified some of the post-tax options that were available in Clinton, Jerome, DeHaven, Madison, Essex and Haddon. If you so chose to take it up, at least we identified websites for you to be able to use, um. And lastly, and here's the detail. Oh, and I'll leave it here for you to pronounce, because if you look at it, it's a small print. But look at all of the comments that were here. As far as the first one, the housing cost and taxes. What I did is I segregated the housing at the last pages. The housing issues comments were in one section and the taxes were in a subsection, cause otherwise it's all mixed up in that whole area. So, I would suggest strongly that you read through those comments, because they, they really are eye opener. And lastly, but not leastly. When the Committee on Aging was established. Um, it was a, quite a board, to be known as, uh, Killingworth Commission on Aging. Initially set up as a committee, which we are now. But until such time as a town meeting establishes the ordinance for such continuing board pursuant to Section five fifteen of the Town Charter. So, I'm hoping and requesting that on one of your future.
Yes.
Board of Selectmen meetings, we take this committee and we make it a commission.
Okay. That's actually the other component that we're waiting on from Town Council to finalize the language for that ordinance. It's just getting that, that's literally the last piece now, that we have the per name software. Going to town meeting and we'll call town meeting, so.
Well, thank you for all that you've done for us as it is and, and especially, especially establishing the Committee on Aging through. Nancy's administration. I know your continued support, but.
Thank you.
There is a need and get me.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you so much for that. I'll be interested in going through the comments, but the.
We'll scan a copy.
It's sobering, you know, um, you know, particularly, you know, the, you know, almost fifty percent with, you know, you know. Loneliness and socialization, you know, that's.
Yeah.
It's very, very troubling and, and of course, you know, taxes, you know, did definitely.
And, and, and this is an aside, but it, it stresses the point that we do need to do something in Killingworth is that. Um, the voter registration for sixty and older, which is sixty is the age that we had determined defines a senior in this town. And we're using the state statute that established sixty as a senior, they're elderly. The total in town is two thousand one hundred and seventy-three, based on the information we got from the registered voter. And this is actually half of the registered voters in town, so something to consider.
Yeah, no. Thank you a lot for that. Uh, thank you very much for that report. It is sobering sometimes to see those things, you know, black and white, you know, just. A couple of things that kind of struck me, just as, as in the motion and, and vision of sort of starting small, right? And, uh, being able to solve the world's problems, but I know, you know, is there, is there maybe kind of some type of potential out there? When we talk about loneliness and some of the shoveling and leaf pickups and things like that. I know we've had some, you know, uh, working with the Board of Red, like, you know, our, our students do a lot of community service. And the high school kids are required to do community service or student, student run clubs and things like that. I can imagine there might be potential if you can find a student or two or three or four, that they have a vested interest in this. And it becomes a passion and they can make those connections, whether it's on personal connections with somebody or help break leaves. Or help paint a porch or help um, shovel the sidewalk and things like that. And at the same time, make a connection with somebody and just sit and talk. Or help somebody with their iPhone, right? Or help somebody with their computer. I think that happens a lot. Um, and I've had sort of experience with student run clubs doing things like that, senior centers, so. Sure, that's a small little thing, but that popped in my mind.
And we're all passionate. I, we're fortunate in having the committee of all passionate people on it. Now granted, there are two vacancies. I think one was appointed.
Yeah, um, yes, Margaret told.
Margaret told and we still have, we need one more, yeah. But uh, but we're only volunteers.
Yeah.
We, we can't do everything. And so I hope you will look upon this. This was phase one when we present our budget to you. Excellent.
Thank you. In the similar vein to what you were saying, Joel, you know, I, I think that's an interesting avenue to pursue, you know, especially since I know the. The HK students, they have um, community service, you know, obligations, but um. Even, you know, I'll make a plug for the Killingworth Lions. Um, the, you know, we have done uh, service projects in the past for Beachwood, you know, installation of ramps and and whatnot. Um, and even just interesting at our, our uh, Board of Directors meeting this past month, we were talking. There's discussion with a, a group that basically is a service organization um, in Connecticut that uh. Uh, looks to help seniors in terms of things like companionship and, you know, uh, tasks like, uh, you know, leaves and grass and all sorts of these. Um, so I, I, I definitely think, you know, working both sides, both like the, the volunteer organizations in town. Uh, I think even the Knights of Columbus might be, you know, I know they do some stuff also uh, in regards to helping seniors that need help, you know, cutting grass, plowing and all sorts of these things. But um, definitely bring us to the forefront, you know, just kind of puts those things on the, on the front burner. And I think perhaps between, you know, the Board of Selectmen and the town, the Committee on Aging, um, and these service organizations, we might be able to really kind of come together um, and help seniors.
Would it be helpful if I came to one of your Lions Club meetings?
Absolutely.
And presented this?
Yes, yeah.
Uh, if you, Eric, if you could, because I know you're an officer in the Lions. If you could tell me when the meetings are.
Sure.
Uh, send me an email.
Sure.
And I'll see which one I could attend. I'd be happy to do that. Because speaking of Lions projects, came up at our last meeting that perhaps we need more benches in town. And especially in Beachwood uh, uh, community. And also um, the fact that uh, they needed signs, more appropriate signage. So maybe these are things we could talk about.
Absolutely.
With the Lions.
Yeah, I'll give you a call.
Okay, thank you.
Paul said everything I wanted to say, so.
Get the words out of your mouth, good.
Yeah. Um. There are no other questions for you, Joan. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you so much, Joan.
You know.
Being an advocate for. For seniors.
Yeah, and you know, it really does help, you know, when you have this information to have these surveys present, you know, just how much need there is. Because it really does let you paint a picture really, so. Forward to the budget. Speaking of the budget, Board of Education Master Capital Plan Discussion. So we were all there on Thursday. All three of us were there. Um. I put this item here mainly so that we could talk a little bit about. If we want to talk about uh, what we were presented with um. Sort of kickstart, it seems like they kind of, I've made the joke, time is a flat circle, we've come back to the beginning. Um, I think it is appropriate that they're focusing on the high school that is the school's greatest need. Um, I remember a conversation we had on the roof of the high school when we were getting the uh, building project underway. Uh, what does, you know. What does a high school project look like? Do we need it to think about it and so on and so forth? It is the school with the biggest need, even though we helped its guts a little bit a few years ago. Um, I think it is heartening that they are planning a. More robust capital improvement plan than what we had previously, which is more of a maintenance plan um, over time. But um. I, I, I can't say I'm sorry that our schools aren't getting shrunk, but at the same time, it was one of those things where. You have to question the direction of the school district and it's always one of suffer collection and how do we report, so.
And you know, timing, interesting, you know, you just presented us the uh, you know, survey from uh, taxes, taxes. Um, so you know, uh, yeah, it was, it was Board of Finance, Board of Ed, uh, Board of Selectmen, both Haddon and Killingworth. And Suzanne Sax and the Board of Ed was just kind of providing us a rundown with a bit more detail about costs and all these things, so. Um, I think the information is kind of leaking in terms of, you know, the options that are being proposed here.
Yeah.
Um, so um, they collectively name um, uh, numbers. So uh, the first one, of course, that was presented to us was uh.
Six A.
Six A, six B, something like that. Uh, with a price tag close to four hundred million dollars with a forty-five year.
Yeah.
Debt term.
So paying off in twenty sixty-six, twenty sixty-seven, that, you know, Haley's comment will have come and gone with that point.
I, I was kind of like, what sort of military, you know, hardware, like are we buying here, you know, for RSD seventeen? Um, but, but what I found to, to be the most interesting, it's, you know, at, at least to me, my initial reaction, it kind of seems that that option is a bit. Of a stretch, say the least. Um, there were other options that were proposed, you know, kind of going down in price. So option seven, for example, um, I think was just over three hundred million, but also a forty-five year, you know, bond term. Um, option seven, I think comes down to like two hundred and like thirty million, you know, twenty-five year, you know.
I think that was option eight.
Uh, option eight, um.
Real rolls off the top.
But, but the one that kind of captured my eye and I think that, you know, at least for me, where I'm trying to get a little bit more information on it, it's um. And the, I think it was, I don't know if it was the engineer that basically provided a very interesting caveat, you know, that anything like greater than. Five-year plan kind of falls out of like the industry standard.
Yeah.
You know, so when you have phase one, phase two, phase three over forty-five years. Population change, political change, I mean, who can predict, you know, what's going to happen in, you know, twenty thirty-four? When we want to do phase three, you know, of option six. Um, so where I think it becomes important that it was kind of a question that I was trying to ask um, the, the Board where, and we did get into discussion of. Um, option nine A and nine B, which they turn, called the pragmatic approach. So the pragmatic approach from what I took and feel free to kind of, you know, um. It's that, you know, roughly it would be about a hundred and fifty million dollars, you know, with the focus on the high school. But I think where the caveat kind of comes into and where they're still trying to flush it out. It's um, how much state reimbursement would you get? And how much of the dollar would be stretched? So one option, you know, like I'd say, o- option, I think A was around a hundred and fifty million bucks. Um, I think with some caveats of some bonding, but then nine A, I think, which was the original plan one, that could be confusing.
Was the original plan one, really, kind of.
Was I think it's, it's less, it's more, there's more ambiguity in terms of um, reimbursement from the state. But also to Superintendent Wibby um, kind of emphasized and you kind of did as well. That a problem that the schools kind of ran into was deferment of, you know, investments in these capital, you know, projects. So you get like KES that kind of, you know, they say have their, have their problems. So having that option, having those options, you basically set like your kid, okay, for the next forty-five years, twenty-five years, you're going to have this. Um, I think he said those other options require more discipline in the sense of, you know, you have to actively kind of be maintaining. So those are, those were kind of like the, the pieces that I, I certainly pulled from it, but you know, my reaction immediately was like, oh.
Yes, you know, and you do the math and it works out to be like ten million dollars or a little under that per year.
Yeah.
Which still ten million dollars is twice the town's budget. Um. On nine A and nine B, which I hate how they like didn't give names to them. Nine A is the plan which has um, the high school renovation or build this new project. Um. The renovation or the reimbursement rates is, it really is the question for that high school. Um, because having attended some of those uh, meetings during the summer and fall, um, the. Feedback meetings, um, public comment meetings, um. It, when we were on, when we did the renovation project at the high school in twenty eighteen, that yearish. Um, our reimbursement was about forty-three, forty-five percent, that range. Um. And. The issue for like piecemeal projects is you're going to tend to get less reimbursement. And I think I made the comment on Thursday of, you know, we're talking about the HVAC system at the high school is one of the components that is failing. Um, when we were doing the renovation project, it didn't make sense because we wouldn't get any. Yeah, uh, reimbursement for that project as a standalone piece. Um, but for, if you're doing a whole high school, well, then you'll probably get some reimbursement or at least, you know, that cost will be defrayed. Um. But it really does come to the point of. As those, and this is kind of why I'm hesitant on. The pragmatic options is. As you do those capital lay, outlays over the years. Those costs are going to increase and I think, was it Peter Baird may have made that point? Um, or I think the superintendent also made the point that um. Yes, it is the cheaper option at this point, however. If you don't have that robustness and discipline in the beginning.
Yeah, that was.
You're going to get, you're going to see those costs increase, so it makes sense to do. He phrased it as like turbocharging the initial investment for like KES or the other elementary schools. Um. That's if we're, and it gets back to the taxes and. Other question and affordability question, because you know, on the one hand, we are constitutionally obligated by the state constitution to. Provide an education for students and. But on the other hand. If we drive population into the dirt, providing that. What's the balance that we can strike? And I'm not saying that we're there yet at this point, but you know, the question is, are we approaching that line? Um. What sort of balance do we need to strike and what sort of benefit are residents getting from the school district? You, you won't hear me ever say a bad word about education or, you know, the education being a top priority of mine. But it is definitely one of those things where you have to think about. How, how do you make the benefit tangible to people so that they see what they're getting? Because for most people, for most seniors, they won't see the high school or middle school or elementary schools more often than not. Um. And so, you know, the social benefits and the. What have you, all the.
Comes more challenging for our largest.
Yeah.
Yeah, population block here in, in, in Killingworth.
Yeah.
But, but I, I think at the, at the end of the day, it seems that, you know, even the lowest option, we're going to be on the hook for about a hundred and fifty mil. Uh, for, for both Haddon and Killingworth. Um.
Before reimbursement.
Yeah.
Before reimbursement and bonded over so many.
Yeah, exactly.
There's that. News, good news, bad news is, I think, one thing about, I'll, I'll say about the Board of Ed, they do a really sort of thoughtful. Methodical. Way of analysis, right? Um, so one of the things I think they were pretty ambitious of, they were going to be ready to present something really, really thought like to us or the towns. And want to get out to referendum, you know, sometime in this spring. I think they've sort of reevaluated that timeframe, so they are back into sort of drawing more stages. They've not to zero, but they're certainly, they've learned some things. And rightfully so, they said, okay, well, timeout, let's take this, what we've learned, see if there's another way to do this. See if there's a cheaper way to do this, see if there's a more efficient way to do this, and so I think they've expanded their timeframe. Um, till probably next winter. Um, if, that's what I'm, that's what I'm, I had to bet, so good news is we don't really have to. This part doesn't really have to do anything and they are sort of fleshing out a couple of more options to come back to us and say, this is what we found out. And this is what this will cost. It will definitely have a cost to it, there's no question, whether or not we will be less or the same.
Yeah, but I definitely think we have a responsibility to our seniors too, you know, especially, you know, again, being there.
We just have to find out what we're dealing with first, we don't know, to be quite honest.
It's a challenge.
Yeah. It is, and you know. We still know. It also ties into, you know, the affordability question, not just for seniors, but for younger folks, because.
Yeah.
One of the challenges is of course, for a young person, you want to raise your kids in a good school district and so. But if you can't afford to live in the good school district, well then. You can't break yourself at the bank trying to get your kids into that district because, well, then you're going to short, give them a short shrift on other things and. There's a whole lot of moving pieces because I can go back to uh, the Affordable Housing Plan that was put together by Planning and Zoning two years ago. And housing taxes, the big, the big stumbling block for me is. You have people saying their top concern is, you know, taxes are too high. But also I want to maintain the rural character of the town and so don't do any development. And well. How do you square the circle really? It's, it's difficult to do no development or limited development and maintain sort of tax base that we have. Because we're ninety-six percent residential in terms of zoning. I think in our tax base, it amounts to like ninety percent, still high is borne by the debt, by the homeowner. So um. Biggest cost is, yes, it is a lot to think about.
Coming down.
So.
So we'll certainly keep everyone posted on. As we get the information.
Yeah, as we get, we get it, I just don't have all of it yet. And this was more, you know. How, how do you want to react? How did you react to the Thursday's presentation? Besides the.
Those are a lot of zeros.
Yeah, that was my reaction when I looked at it and went, okay, oh, we're in twenty sixty-seven, how old will I be? Oh, okay. All right, sure, um. Hearing no other discussion, public comment.
I only have one comment. I tried to get, um, I spoke with the guidance office at the school. And in my first year trying to get people to do community service. Got zero response. Um, the only, my only suggestion, if you were to do something like that, you'd need a concerted effort. You'd need a team to be working with the school, um, getting a, a small group of kids who are interested in doing this type of service together. Otherwise, it's going to fall flat. And uh.
Yeah.
Unfortunately, I've been taking notes, I have a few things, just on that same note, Eagle Scout projects. I'm thinking the benches, Joan, stuff like that, the Eagle Scouts, uh, they've reached out, well, we've reached out to them, even simple things at the pantry. They're looking for winter projects, benches, so Eagle Scouts is another thing maybe to partner with, just speaking for them. I have two Eagle Scouts, but don't currently, but that's another good group. Um, just if for a second, just to circle back to committee vacancies. I've just spent a little time kind of going through a lot of, just to kind of see, find new people reaching out. Um, so that kind of brought up the Sustainable um, CT Committee. Um, because you know, I'm pretty aware that all of our committees are given a charge. And I wish we could say that everybody did the same job with their charge.
Yeah.
As uh, the Committee on Aging, which is just, again, because it's very easy to, once you get it as a committee, to kind of go all over the place. But you've really uh, taken that charge and said, even when it kind of goes off the rails, bringing it back. uh taken that charge and said, even when it kind of goes off the rails, bringing it back to that. But having said that, when I saw a couple of questions with Connecticut CT, personally, I think it's a great thing that that was put into place and given a charge, but they don't meet. I think they've met three times in the year and a half plus, so to me, I know that you've got a zillion things on, it's not your job to track every committee in town, are they meeting, why aren't they meeting, is it quorum, is it you know, all the different things that could go on for not, but do they need a new charge? I don't know. But more importantly, it is a little concerning when you do have a a current committee that has no minority party representation. Can they actually meet? I don't know, so it, I guess, not to give you a job, Eric, but if they can't currently meet, I think they need to be told they can't meet. And also, maybe even hearing from them, do they need a new charge, or is it like traffic that just needs to I don't want, again, put anything else under you guys, but what's going on there? Because again, I think that there was a lot of interest of things, but it's just from a bird's eye view, kind of looked like it has fallen flat, but more importantly, again, I'm gonna try to reach out to people. Again, I just was kind of just trying to narrow that, but for the moment, I don't know if they can meet, cause they don't have any um minority party on there. Um, I'm gonna really try not to reflect on all the school capital stuff, but one thing that, um, you know, I'm pretty well-versed, I look at most of the material. Um, a lot of their dollar representation is based on assessed value of two hundred and eighty thousand dollars in town. I would be curious, and I'm sure a lot of other people would be curious, what percentage of this town actually falls into that? I I honestly don't know, you figure that's probably a market value of about four hundred thousand dollars. Is that number small, is that number not? So to me, I think that in representing that, I think it's really important when you see that chart and you say, oh, this year my taxes are only gonna go up six hundred bucks, no, times da-da-da-da-da, whatever, and it's you know, that's not a straight dollar amount, but as, you know, maybe when you're looking or you're meeting with them, just to make sure that that, those charts are fabulous. You know, I'm a numbers person, but it can be a little misleading. Um, another thing, not to charge it with any other thing to do, but uh, one of the biggest regrets, I think, on the ten million dollars that was spent on the high school over all those projects, there was never a a kind of a a series of meetings to say what went right, what went really bad. And I think when you hear about state reimbursement, uh, not only percentages, but actually getting the check in your hand, we're still waiting.
Yeah.
So, uh, and I think that's really important for the community to know, and I think it's really important for you guys to understand what if we can't track ten million dollars, how are we tracking a hundred and fifty million dollars? And we know that the district, um, Word of Ed and District, I'll put the both in the same thing, that money, those activities were not tracked. So I look at it as, you know, we think we're gonna spend two and a half million dollars on solar, what did it come down to in change orders, you know? Was it a normal percentage, was it a high percentage, you know, and 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 why are we, you know, I know a little bit, why are we still waiting for that money? Why is the reimbursement coming in significantly lower? I think Joel is probably well-versed as to why, but again, if we can't manage that, what's happening here? So those are my concerns as to moving forward, I certainly think we need to move forward on a lot of things. Um, could we have done a better job of putting some of the maintenance repairs in a capital budget versus using, I mean, as an operating versus capital, because you could do, you could have done that, you know, we're limited to what you can put into a a a capital budget every year, but you're not limited to how much you could put into that capital, so, I mean, you're operating, excuse me, so there's a lot of that, but really, um that, when you're going to, I know you're gonna have a lot more of these meetings, just to kind of reflect back onto those projects that we did, that was ten million dollars, and to keep in mind that you're still paying for those. So to think that you might rip off a roof that you have yet to pay for, I think those are important things. I'm not saying don't do it, maybe there's a reason to do it, but I think those are the really important things that are kind of missing from all these presentations. And I think, uh, unfortunately, very few people know that, I think there's a loud voice in this town that says, shame on all of us, we haven't touched that high school in thirty years, and that's certainly not the case, so, anyway, I'm gonna off my soapbox there for a little bit.
Thank you, thank you, Ellie. Richard.
So on the permitting software, the nineteen thousand that they need to set it up and stuff, why don't they take the twenty-three thousand NARBA funds and direct that instead of making it possibly needed somewhere else? Use it for the setup, because you can use it for the setup. So that's one thing, the other thing is the school, my class was the first class to go all four years in that high school. I was a little concerned when I walked through it on some of the presentations, because it was intentionally left in a state of disrepair to make people go, oh my God, the place looks terrible. A lot of the stuff that I saw there was cosmetic, could be reasonably fixed. HVAC systems, they have a lifespan of twenty years, you have to have it. There's grants available for it, and I wonder why nobody's not applying for any of the grants, because you have a mandate coming down that if school isn't maintained between a certain temperature, you have to shut for the day, so there's grants available for this equipment, but nobody seems to be pursuing it. So there's, there's, I, you know, a hundred and fifty million dollars, I I think they're a little over the top. Um, you know, they walked through, they said we need handicap ramps here and there, I should still put one in, I did construction for forty years, I can put one in. I just, a lot of the stuff they seem to address in some of the meetings I saw were not multimillion-dollar projects. You know, at some point, our elementary school should become the town campus, and then we shift things around. We've got a brand-new school over here that's well underused. So, you know, I think rather than dump it all into a high school, I think things could be shifted around, but it it was just, I was just a little distraught that it was intentionally left in disrepair for these openings that they walk people through. And I realize we have a new superintendent that's come from a school that had almost unlimited numbers available, cause it was a state school. It was easier for him to grab money in a bigger town. You know, when our seniors are fifty percent of what's in this town.
Yeah.
So you're gonna put that burden on fifty percent of the taxpayers in the town, and I happen, now that I know the numbers, I happen to be one of them.
Good ones on there too.
Walk through to parents with kids in the school and say, okay, your taxes double, everybody else stays the same, and then let's see if they're up for all these big improvements.
Thank you.
Wait, the only thing I, you guys touched on the open position uh was Walt. My question is, you had mentioned that you are gonna work on the listing or whatever.
External posting, yeah.
External posting, uh, do you know, timing-wise, when that's gonna be done and where it will be posted?
One of the locations will be ListServe, um. I'm still thinking through uh other possibilities, I know List Serve is more targeted towards uh public works, I I was trying to find the word for, yeah. Um, so that seems the most appropriate place, but, you know, we've already gotten some.
State has a list, a OEDM that you can post it on too.
I'll set that up too, so thank you.
Office of Education Day, a lot of stuff like the zoning, a lot of those things pop up on that website.
I know, we've, we've just posted on Casio for CEO.
I would put the CEO on the OEDM as well, cause they do list it out there. Because that goes out to building officials, fire marshals.
Yeah.
And there's a lot that share that component.
Yeah.
That you might pick up a CEO off of that, or a OEO off of that too.
There's a lot of permutations there, so. All right.
Unfortunately, now I have to ask you two for comments. Oh, boy, uh, well, granted, it's almost nine o'clock, I'll keep, I'll keep it short, you know, I just want to thank you for going through all that and, you know, shining a light on the seniors and the needs of seniors. Um, and uh just for a good meeting today and for all the feedback we got from you guys, so thanks to everyone.
Same, I, you know, I wanted to thank you for, you know, that really concise but thoughtful and um informational report, so thank you for that, I don't have all the answers for you, but I I remain committed to be able to work with you or your committee or constituents, um, I'm happy to meet, talk anytime and offer.
Thank you.
Okay. Um, I will echo their comments towards you, Joan, thank you for all you've done, um, I'm gonna try and keep this quick. On Friday, we're meeting with GZA and uh Rob Albert from the Schools, uh one of our town engineers, um, Ryan Brennan, uh, the sanitarian for the town. Trying to get uh DEEP to at least phone in um, for, to discuss the filtration system and design. Uh, currently, the hangup is on what do you do with the uh wastewater um, from the reverse osmosis system that we want to install here on the town campus to handle the salt. Um, obviously, you don't want to put the saltwater back in the ground, cause then you have, you're back to square one. Um, so that's gonna be the discussion on Friday. Uh, Wednesday is RiverCog meeting, um, Joe Courtney's gonna be there, other uh legislative leaders in at the state level will be there, I believe, um. And, you know, we're coming up on the session to discuss how the state government is gonna be spending money and handling taxes, um, and so any insight there would be helpful. Um, we got a little taste of that, you and I, Eric, uh, at uh Old Sabre at the probate court on Judge Lewis opened her doors to tell us a little bit about how the probate court works and how they get their funding, surprised it's mostly not from the state. Um, it was fees, yeah, it was mostly fees, which you don't think about when you think of the state of Connecticut, actually, you think mostly just taxes. Um, on Friday, I mentioned this a little bit, I met with the LG and uh Deeper's First Selectwoman here at Town Hall. Um, we talked about, you know, what opportunities there are for Killingworth to, you know, work with Department of Transportation on, you know, road studies or what sort of grants and funding is available. Um, see, there was uh, I don't have anything I feel is really needs to be said about public comment, um. That's really all I have. So, at eight forty-two, I'll call this meeting adjourned, sorry, eight forty-three, just end over.